City Council Workshop. At this time, I ask you silence any electronic devices you have and sign on little yellow card if you'd like to speak to us tonight and get it to the city clerk and we'll call you up at the appropriate time. Councilman Blocker, since you did the pledge at the last meeting, you're well versed in this, I'd ask you to do it again.
Y'all stand with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible and just for all.
Thank you. We don't sign in workshops because we don't make motions of vote or anything like that. We just study things, discuss things, and so, but I will note that all the city council men are here, as long, as well as our mayor, city clerk, city attorney, and our department Anybody have any objections with tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to public comments. Anybody in the public that would like to comment on anything on tonight's agenda? Anybody in the public like to comment on anything on tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we move on to item number six, which will be with our staff, and we'll begin with A and, I don't see the B, I see A, C, David. That's all right. We'll begin with 6A.
Okay. See, that little B kept disappearing, but on the final one, it finally went in there. I just wanted to reiterate about the building officials' duties and responsibilities. There's been some confusion, confusion about it. So, we have executed the inter-local agreement with Fort Walton Beach's Public Works Department for services for the building official and inspector. They will be carrying out the duties for mechanical and electrical plans review and inspections for commercial projects only. All residential reviews and inspections, as well as the commercial structure plumbing reviews and inspections, shall be completed in-house. So, there seemed to be a confusion about what duties they were going to have there that should answer it in a nutshell.
Who was confused? They were?
No, sir. The general, the general public was confused.
Okay, all right.
So, if there's no questions?
Nope. 6B.
That is the request for vacation of a portion of Mapos Street right-of-way between Hickory Street West and James Lee Boulevard West. This has been talked about for a while, and we have, it's been through the meetings, the TRC, and it was finally passed through the LPA July 31st. And in discussion of this, if you remember sometime last year or so, we vacated Main Street that was actually under the courthouse. Well, this is the continuation of Main Street, which comes to the north side of Highway 90, where it becomes Mapos. Platted, it is still Main Street. We are going to vacate the consensus of all the agencies, the LPA, the TRC staff, and those that have reviewed it. We have discussed it with public services. The actual right-of-way property will be vacated. We shall retain an easement for utility purposes, ingress egress, and typical use purposes of the roadway. The church will accept responsibility of maintaining the roadway in cases, unless, in rare cases, utilities must be dug up to be repaired, and then whoever the utility company is would be required to repair the road back into its original condition.
Is the church owning on both sides?
They own it on both sides of the, of one end of it, and the Burger King restaurant owns it on the other quarter. Burger King is in agreement with the utilization of the right-of-way for additional parking for both entities, so.
Well, I think, if Burger King owns one side, church on the other side, that party would revert to the same.
The property would, but the Burger King is in alignment with the agreement with the church of maintaining the pavement. They don't wish to maintain, the church wishes to maintain it, so the agreement between the, for the maintenance will actually be with the First Baptist Church. And Burger King may actually deed that property over to the First Baptist Church, and which they will be allowed to do once the document's recorded, so.
Comments, questions?
Questions.
Councilman Cox, you're first. You're second.
Yes, Teresa, can you confirm that in vacating this, that the First Baptist Church cannot build on that anywhere? That, that no buildings would be allowed on it?
Well, they couldn't get a bill.
Because it was still got it.
None of one, the code.
Utility easement.
Mm-hmm. But they're, they're going to require for it to remain as parking, as asphalt parking. The asphalt's going to stay there in order to cover the numerous utilities that are under that.
Go ahead, Councilman Blocker.
Well, he unstole my story now. Part of it, but now, what about the utility right-of-way, what have you? Is the city going to maintain any of that at all?
Actually, the road is almost paved completely on the right-of-way.
I know it is.
From, from side to side.
I walked it step by step.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's, pretty much the whole right-of-way is either paved or has concrete curbing on it. So, the maintenance for the entire right-of-way will become the church's.
But if necessary, the right-of-way could be paved? That's been the question asked to me.
The whole portion of the right-of-way being vacated is either has asphalt paving on it, has concrete curbing, and there's a small portion of a concrete sidewalk. So, there's not really per se open vacant land in the church area. There is a little bit of grass there that Burger King takes care of.
Yes, there is.
As part of their yard. They, they will continue to do maintenance on the grass portion.
But there's no restrictions for non-use of any area period on the north side of Maple Street? On the church side, the church can have full availability of everything on the north side of Maple Street.
You mean on the, like the eastern side?
Well, I'm talking about on the church side.
Okay, if you're, the church side. Let's identify it that way.
Yeah, pretty church side.
Because that's more in the eastern, northeastern.
Well, to me, the north.
Okay. That would be the, the, where the, back up to the church's sidewalk, that will be for parking. They've already got parking there that's established.
There's no restrictions of use by the church, that's what I want to verify.
No, well, it'd just be used as their parking.
They own it on both sides in some areas.
That's true.
Yeah. They, they have it on both sides, so, and they're going to utilize it as parking because they need parking. They will, the right-of-way will be open because that's their fire protection access.
Well, I would ask to clarify that tonight. So, is that plain as mud now?
It's going to be parking. It is parking, going to stay parking.
No restrictions.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Steele, you have any, excuse me, excuse you, Mr. Holly. Mr. Steele, you have, you have any objections to that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good enough. Mr. Holly, you had something?
What I was saying is that the city would still have the right to run utilities.
Have the easement, yes. Utilities. Okay.
Okay. This will come back to you in the form of an ordinance at the next meeting for first reading, and then it's our indication that is to be a special meeting as the last meeting in September, so we would like to bring that back for passage at that special meeting.
Mr. Whitten.
Yeah, go ahead, Teresa.
We'll remind that we have a 5:15 public hearing on the last meeting in September for budget, so we can't really interfere with that, so it's either going to have to be before or after the public.
It was, I thought it was our indication that the last meeting in September was going to be the youth meeting over at Warriors Hall.
It's October.
It's October.
Of October? Okay, well, then we'll probably hit you at the first meeting in October.
I mean, the public hearing won't last 15 minutes if you want to have the special meeting at 5:30, but it is scheduled for 5:15 on 20.
Well, our, by having it in a workshop ahead of time, when you get the ordinances for these items, it's, you already have an understanding of what they're supposed to be.
And we're all here, too.
So.
Okay, 6C, please.
That is a request down on 5300 Firdan Boulevard South. Some people know it as Todd Switzer's property. Some people know it as the old Sundial Mobile Home Park. Hit Some To Me LLC actually owns it, owns those three parcels there. And when they had purchased the property some, several years ago, and was going to do a commercial development there, just so you know, they, the property has always been commercial and commercial future land use. Before 2004, 2005, commercial was one of your higher-density forms of residential development. So, if you question why it's, it's still commercial and they were still thinking about back and forth for residential, it's because the residential was put there at such a time that it was allowable. It's no longer allowable now, so any residential development would have had to, had a comp plan amendment and a rezoning. So, Hit Some To Me wants to, to abandon the old easements that are through the middle of this property. There was ingress egress, it was a trailer park. Down the middle of the property was an ingress egress for access. There was also an existing water main through there, a private water system that serviced 32, 32 units, 34, 32 units. Along the south, southern boundary line, there was an eight-inch sewer main that also provided services to those 32 mobile homes. Hit Some To Me partnered or sold to Riverwalk Development, going to do a commercial development. They wiped out the private water system. They utilized, they capped the water line leading into the property off, put a fire hydrant on it, and they have capped the sewer line. All that remains of the water and sewer in that, on that particular piece of property is the easements that are given to the city. So, they would like to go through the process of abandoning and vacating the easements.
Questions, comments? Go ahead, Councilman Hayes.
And this is, due to Mr. Steele, our staff, do we have a need for this?
No, sir. We should have never had easements there to begin with, in my opinion.
It's all private, right?
It's all private, and we shouldn't have had ownership of those utilities in there to begin with.
Okay. Mr. President.
Councilman Cox, you have a question, comment?
That's answered.
That's answered, okay. Looks like we don't have an issue with this one either, so you can bring that back to Now, the focus of tonight, kind of, I need to preface this a little bit. That is, we're not solving any issues here tonight. What, what Teresa's going to do is tie up a lot of ongoing projects we have and have us, she'll discuss what they are, and have us decide how to prioritize these so we can get them done in the manner that we feel needs to be done in the most expeditious manner in order to get it accomplished. So, she'll go over these with us, and then our homework will be to take these home and prioritize them low, medium, or high, and then feed them back. I'm assuming we'll feed them back before the next meeting. We'll send an email to you, whatever, and then you'll come back with a list.
Whenever you have the green sheet completed, you can stick it in my office door bin, and that's what we will utilize to try to attempt to schedule the first half of these outstanding tasks.
All right, let's begin with the first project, the corridor management study update.
Okay. For those of you, especially your TPO guys, on August 16th, the Transportation Planning Organization, the city requested that the corridor management study be inclusive for all of 85, from Airport Road to Antioch Road and split there at Aplin Roadway, should be placed on the priority list. This was approved by TPO unanimously. The study will provide a means of studying all traffic issues affecting Highway 85 in its entirety, such as the volume of vehicles, timing of lights, all other issues. The results will be to provide suggestions of how to improve the flow of traffic, reduce waiting time on lights. The results, the resulting solutions should vary from closing down dangerous mediums, where there are some areas, they would be controlling, creating controlled turns, improving light timing, improving and creating alternate routes through the city streets for locals and emergency services, moving north and south without utilizing Highway 85. This study is on the priority list with three other studies that need to be also prioritized and then considered funding. The continuing efforts for the TPO will be a push for the study and should occur as quickly as possible, as soon as funding is ensured. Usually timelines on this effort are two to three years before completion and sometime longer if dependent funding is available. Our question here would be, do you want more information on the corridor management? Do you want a presentation by the planner for a better understand and the costs, or do you want to evaluate some type of funding mechanism from the city itself?
Gentlemen, comments, questions on this project? Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Blocker.
I'd really like to see the number two there. I'd like to see a short presentation on the planner providing better understanding here for this need.
Okay, you were at the TPO meeting, all right?
Yeah.
You've seen it. Councilman Cox.
Me, I was there.
Oh, yes, I just wanted to add, Trey Dooley did an excellent presentation.
Fantastic, wasn't he?
He had his statistics together, that was very good, so the ball was moved forward on that.
Yeah, I heard two people say they want to have the presentation.
That was super.
Councilman Hayes, what are you on that?
I, I was in there to, that's why I would like to hear this presentation.
All right. Councilman, there are two and four of the benefits of the members attending. All right, let's go ahead. We haven't prioritized it yet, but let's come and put it on a list of things to do, and it'll be prioritized by us and sent back to you.
Right. And, and that's when we will schedule your, the presentation. If you need it, the presentation prior to being able to prioritize funding and all, just note that on your form. But if, so we will go on down to the next subject?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay. That is your Title VI's Non-Discrimination Policy and Plan. City of Crestview is successfully working towards becoming LAPS certified, which means that this will allow the city to administer the transportation alternatives grants on its own without having to utilize the services of Okaloosa County. This will improve our ability to receive funding from sources for projects such as sidewalk design and construction, bicycle facilities, intersection improvements for pedestrians' safety. One part of the LAPS certification is to bring the City of Crestview into compliance with numerous federal regulations, which are compiled together in the program known as your Title VI. This program protects people from discrimination based on race, color, national origin, in any part, any program that receives federal funding. This program will also serve to open up other opportunities for funding various improvement projects, as it will improve the services of the city that the city provides to the citizens. If you need to have more information for the Title VI policy, if you're not familiar with it, if you would like a copy of the draft that we have, we do have a draft already prepared. If you would like a short presentation for a better understanding of the policy, the next rounds of the TA applications are due November 2018. This policy really needs to be in place.
No, gentlemen, comments, questions?
Mr. President.
Go ahead, Councilman Hayes.
Due to the shortness of this right here, for the applications, I think this would be a high priority in my opinion.
Well, that'll be something you, when I see.
I just want to throw my, my.
Well, I agree with you when you look at the suspense, November 2018. Councilman Cox.
Yes, this is also, I know, being worked on, Trey Dooley, and just goes hand in hand with, with the first item, high priorities.
Any other comments? If not, it sounds to me as though we would like, at least I would like, all the first two.
Yeah.
That is a copy of the draft policy and a presentation, and we'll prioritize it, but like Councilman Hayes says, it looks like it might prioritize itself, and we need to do this in November.
Well, you know, it's November this year or November next year.
Nah, we don't need to keep on moving down that road.
No.
Well, we're, we're moving at a fast pace. Mr. Dooley is, is really expediting a lot of things. He is a great asset to our department, so let's keep him busy, okay? Your ADA compliance study and analysis. The planning department is a process of compiling data concerning the compliance of developments for the city with the current ADA standards. In processing the business tax receipt, which involves a site visit to the property, we have discovered that outdated signage is the main key element that was out of compliance. To aid in this particular compliance issue, the department is stocking the approved signage and will be able to provide it to the public at cost. One complaint that stemmed that was that they could not find the proper signage, so we're going to solve that. We shall work with the property owners to correct other non-conformities, and this will also include our city buildings. It's a never-ending process, and it's very difficult to get around and get every little minute detail done, so we're going to have, we're going to help spot the, the items that need to be when, because we have people that are out in the field and they are interacting in the buildings, it is easier for them to notice a non-conformity and then turn it over to public services or, or the fire department where it is necessary. So, we're going to be their boots on the grounds and be their spotters. We did list out the details for the handicap parking and accessibility. In our code, public parking lots are to be maintained in all respects. Parking area surfaces must be kept in good condition, free from potholes. The parking space lines and markings shall be kept clear and distinct, clearly visible and distinct. Also, there is provisions in the state statutes for the signage itself. Whether you need more information on the study, or do you want us just to continue what we're doing and give periodic updates?
Gentlemen, any opinion on this one?
Mr. President.
Go ahead, Councilman Hayes.
I look at it, it's, when you start looking at them, all of them are high, but, but I think this is something that we could put, at least, in the medium to low, and some other things, in my opinion, are more important at the present moment, so.
Would you say sentence two over sentence one then? At the very bottom? Continue the process and give periodic updates?
Yeah, I would say that.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Is that what I hear?
That's what you heard.
Any kind of consensus for that? Okay, you got that?
Okay.
All right.
Okay. Revisions to Chapter 14, the Building and Building Regulations. Revisions to Chapter 14 are going to be based on the Florida Building Code Sixth Edition that come out and become effective 2017. It was, that is December 31st, in case anybody wants the exact date. The Building Officials Association of Florida has prepared a model document to be used by its members as a tool to facilitate the uniform and concise, consistent application of local amendments to the administrative provisions of the Florida Building Code, which is what we have adopted, withhold here in this, the city. So, this should help us uphold this. Every effort represented has been made to, made to present the amendments in a mandatory language format. The Crestview Administrative Code contains substantial materials owned and copyrighted by the International Code Council. The ICC has granted non-exclusive license to the Florida Building, the Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulations to make the Florida Building Code available. This material is available through the BOAF website, and order that the members may use it as a tool for integrating the administrative provisions from the Florida Building Code and the 2015 International Building Code. If you think the ICC sounds familiar, that is where we extracted the Crestview Property Maintenance Code from. This is to be an intense study and may require several workshops in order to work through the complete 34-page booklet. However, it being ICC document, there again, the Property Maintenance Code was the same type document there, so formatting there is very similar. We can provide a draft document for study at least two to four weeks prior to any workshops being scheduled, and then lead on from further scheduling of workshops at that time. The new building code has been in effect since December 31st, 2017. It is advantageous that the new revisions be adopted as soon as possible.
Gentlemen, comments, questions? I favor number two. You don't want to see a draft document first?
Just put them both together.
Yeah, I would think both. My only comment would be is that, you're right, we've seen this before, and we've, we found that the ICC was very comprehensive, and we as a city can't copy that. I mean, we just, it was way too specific for what we need, so I think you have to be careful what you're going to extract from that.
Well, in this matter, the Building Associates, the Building Officials Association has already extracted and highlighted the areas that's going to be.
Well, they didn't take that whole puppy, because we didn't, we didn't like a lot of that stuff in there.
Oh, you're talking about the maintenance code. Maintenance code is, it's only the format, that's a whole nother book together. Building code's completely different. It's just the same format.
Well, yeah, I bet it'll be just as comprehensive.
Uh, yes, sir, it's 34 pages.
All right.
And that's, if you remember the first sentence, "It will be an intense study and may require several workshops."
Well, we'll get that, we'll get that draft, and we'll figure that out.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Councilman Cox had a real question.
Oh, sorry.
You know, I thought we were closer than that on this item, on it, with certain exceptions, adopting the, the ICC-type code.
That's the next one?
Yeah.
The, the one that y'all had done was the Crestview.
Property maintenance, so it's confusing the two also.
Okay.
This is the building code, this is property maintenance code.
Yeah, okay. Okay. In order to adopt our maintenance code, we are going to have to utilize that through Chapter 38. It's just the only place that will, that will do what it's got to do. So, the revision of Chapter 38, the Health and Sanitation, revise, revisions will add the addition, the addition of the Crestview Property Maintenance Code, which has been approved, and we're going to place that into our Code of Ordinances. Chapter 38 was created by the adoption of ordinance number 805 and was adopted in November 22nd, 1993, and that's what exists in Chapter 38 at this time. So, the verbiage of the Property Maintenance Code has already been approved, and this also needs to be adopted as soon as possible.
I think we all agree with that, because we spent a lot of time on that.
Yeah.
All right. All right, both of those apply?
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Hayes.
Now, what timeframe are you, are, would it be, depends on, I guess, if we make it a top priority or...
Yeah.
Okay.
The higher you make these projects, the sooner they're going to be before you. Keep in mind, this is just the first half of the projects.
But, but having said that, it's going to be an average of the high, low, medium vote you're getting from all five.
That's right. Whatever you prioritize, if you have, if you only have one person that thinks it's high and everybody else thinks it's low, that particular one is going to the end of the line. If I have five people screaming that this is high or extremely high, well, you know what? You're going to see that pretty quick.
I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
Hope we call the expectancy thing different, but, well, it's fine.
That's right, that's life.
Okay. Chapter 74, Streets and Sidewalk Addressing Update. Gentlemen, we've talked about addressing off and on for, since 2014, when the council at that time determined that we were going to continue post-directional. We're now receiving calls from the first wave of the census 23rd workers. The main census information collection is from physical sites, and it will take place next year. Apart from being prepared for this, as well as meeting the local government unit deadline for address verification, which staff has confirmed the existence of approximately 13,000 addresses in the city, which we have come, are completing this week. One of the requests from the Census Bureau is the physical verification and the visibility of the number placements of the structure. During the early field investigation, numerous structures were found without proper visibility posting, or posting a conflicting number, or no postings at all. Notifications to property owners will need to be sent out via postal delivery, which will incur a cost. Advertisement, that will incur a cost. Physical delivery, that would incur a cost. Second, the absolute need for updating in the internal system within the city itself, and, which is noticed, and that comes into a little further down the, down the list. More important, more information on the complexity of correcting the address system, if you need it. The census data collection is extremely important, as it holds a tremendous value in the future development of our city. It happens every 10 years. The ease of location of the citizens for the interviews that are taking place will add the accuracy factor to the data. So...
Hey, Councilman Hayes.
Okay, only question I left there when I saw it, it says 2030 workers, is that supposed to be 2020 workers, or is it 2030?
We've already had, this is going to be the, this will run from 2020 to 2030. The time span for this, this information is what they're going to draw for, from, just like, right now, if we're evaluating something, we're using 2010. So, this next one will run us from 2020 through 2030. That's what people will evaluate, that's how long people will use that data to evaluate it.
Yeah, I, I don't have your question, but I, you just said 2030 workers, and I was, my thing was, 2030 is when they're going to be looking at it.
Well, 20, 2020, 2030.
2020, okay.
Yep.
Okay, I got it. That's what I'm...
I'm also working on 2030, which is a whole different organization.
Councilman Block, you have a...
I just want to verify, well, this 2010, we have that info in hand, do we not, Mr. State?
Did, did we not, didn't we approve the parameters of the, of the identifications on residents several months ago? We talked about how high they were going to be, whether they're going to...
Yes, sir, we already know all that.
...go in the dark, and all that kind of stuff. We've done that portion, so what we didn't do is fund...
You didn't fund it.
Any advertising.
Didn't fund it, didn't fund it at all, so without funding, as long as we had our little ad in the paper or something that we were utilizing last year, we mentioned things like that, but right now, I have no mechanism to get the word out to the people.
What I think we're going to have to do then is bring us the information on what it's going to cost to get it authorized, and we'll give you the priority.
Okay, okay, give me the, well, give me the priority, and I'll tell you how much it costs. How about that?
Then we'll change our priority. All right, go on.
Okay, land use and zoning incompatibility. We've discussed this item many times without coming up with a complete solution. The city has made great strides in collecting, correcting a large portion of the problems with the ear process beginning in 2008, passage of the amendments in 2010. This portion was, the zoning portion was actually completed in 2014 with all those numerous rezoning ordinances. And that was basically, the rezoning took place when the council allowed us $20,000 in order to secure the rezoning. We've got a good start, however, there is much more needed to be completed. Gentlemen, this was a self-induced problem and is causing a hardship on citizens that are directly involved on the incompatible assignments of zoning and use on their property. We have analyzed the approaches of solving the solution. Unfortunately, it's costly, costly. It's not as costly as citizens processing the changes one property at a time, which in order to process one property that is less than 10 acres is right at $5,000. So, more information, more dollars, more, that was about the only question that I, I could think of. Do you want more information, or? Okay.
Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Hayes.
My mind slips sometimes, but we, we talked about this, and we talked, then we talked about one time by trying to see about doing a large swath of land, because it would cause us almost the same as doing one, you could do...
10 acres.
Yeah, we did the, we did the 10 acres, which are small scales. We evaluated whether or not to break them up into small scales, or wrap them into location type elements for, even if it wasn't long, even if it classified into a conventional, and not a small scale. We've got several ways. Any way you wrap it, it's going to cost. So, if you want me to wrap it in small, you'll have a bunch of small. For us to do a small scale, you can almost bet that it's going to run you between $4,000 and $5,000 a pop. To do a conventional, which would allow us to do a larger area. But there again, if you want me to bring back and show you the analysis on it, I would be happy to do that. We just need a slot of time to do that.
I think that's what we need, and we'll prioritize that also.
Okay.
Put it on our list of that party list.
We need to entertain some new zoning categories. We're in the process of going through some of that information now. We have a mixed-use classification for our future land use, which allows a description of, of certain regulations of what can be built on that. However, we do not have the compatible mixed-use zoning that would go with that. In the other situation, our, we have a zoning category that is R1A, which is primarily the northern end of the city, up in the Adams-Pow subdivision, where the lots are really huge. Then you have your R1, which is most everybody else in single-family, which is 25-foot front yard setback and 25 in the rear, seven and a half on each side, 15 to 25 on a corner lot. In order to develop in that commercial avenue, they come up with the single or multifamily R2 category. The only difference in the yard requirements for your R2 and your R1 was that your R2 had a 20-foot rear setback. It also allowed for multifamily. We would like to process having, in conjunction with pulling our zoning noncompatibility clause there, is to be able to distinguish a single-family R2 category and a multifamily R2 category. What happens is, there is a width restriction there. The width restriction for multifamily is, it must be the 75-foot wide. A single-family must be 50-foot wide. However, you have single-family developments that carry this single or multifamily zoning districts that are wide enough to fit multifamily in that area. Multifamily in a single-family neighborhood is not an advantageous development. Multifamily needs to have certain areas at which you're allowed multifamily, your duplexes, your quads, your triplexes. That needs to be in a certain quarter. If you've got a single-family established neighborhood, which can meet this qualification for your R2, then they have a legal right to be zoned that, and beside your big, nice, single-family homes, you're going to qualify a duplex there. So, this is a way to protect the neighborhoods, the values of the neighborhoods, and centralize your multifamily in an area where multifamily would be most appropriate and most advantageous, that they have the road capacity for your, your more intense development. For, where you have intent, more intense development, you have way more traffic, so therefore it takes a little more concern with how the roadways interact with each other. So, it's, it's, you can tell how it will need a workshop in order to fully explain this.
That's kind of comprehensive, I mean, I don't, I'm sure I understand what the S does to the, to the two, and the M to the two, makes it better than the one and the two separated, so I think we, I think we really need a workshop on that.
We do. I agree, Mr. President, and also, the one above that, it's got to be tied into that one before that, for that one to happen. The land use and zoning incompatibility's got to be corrected before we look at that, am I correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Any other comments, questions? You're going to have to...
This is just, this is just the first set of dominos, so...
One other question, Mr. President.
Yeah, go ahead.
And I know she's done, and does a great job on that, but you don't give us any cost on any of these things, estimate costs, you know? It would be nice to know over, or how many, when you...
I think we're going to have to workshop.
Is that what we're going to get that?
I don't think so.
But how are we going to prioritize, after the workshop, right?
Mr. Hayes, if I had give you the cost, you would have had sticker shock, and we would have, we would still be trying to prioritize.
We don't have sticker shock regardless of this year or next year.
The priority is not, prioritization's not doing it, priority is getting educated, moving it along.
So, we'll, we're going to have this, get it from Mr. Block, Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Speaker.
When you, you start talking cost, being my background, I automatically come up with a question. If a residence is zoned single-family, and through the census process or some other means, we find out there are five families living there, what do we do? Do we find them, or do we make them move? Do we rezone it?
Rezoning would not be advantageous.
I wouldn't think so.
It would be better to bring them into compliance in the zoning that they're in.
Wow.
Which is a, there are mechanisms that can be used. I won't go into details with it, but there is mechanisms for...
That's maybe why we need a workshop.
There, in order to, to adhere that the, that they're complying with the neighborhood that they're in.
But to me, there's always a, or else. How do you, how do you get them to comply or else? What's the or else?
I, I think that'll be addressed in a workshop, Mr. Speaker.
Yes.
I think we can't really go through this.
I don't, I don't, I don't want to do all the refinements tonight.
This is just your tickler to get y'all talking. The Land Development Code, which is our land development regulations, as you know, we've been working on this for, this is, we're heavily into the second year of pulling this together. The land use regulations are currently undergoing intense analysis and revisions to incorporate new laws, regulations from federal, state, and local entities, along with the new regulation of numerous agencies involved in the development avenues and operational activities of the city. Since the major hall and modernization of the existing code, it will require a period of time to work through these details. This is the only time I have inserted a suggestion. I don't want to be out of line, but this would probably be most effective if it was scheduled during a period after your holidays and before your budget cycle starts, as this is intense. You have, you've got quite a number of articles, and Chapter 102 has approximately 23 articles within itself.
It gives a few months to, to get that on the list.
This includes the new stormwater ordinance.
Yeah. It'll give us a little bit of time, because right now we're just finishing one budget process before we begin the other one.
Mm-hmm. Okay, next, the alcohol beverage regulations. Consumption on premises has been studied and analyzed, and we have a document to present, which will open up not only for, it's going to open up discussion not only within certain areas of the city, such as your parks and your areas there, but also it has been requested to open it up citywide for discussion. So, the next area would be your down...
Would you back up on that?
Oh, sorry.
It has been suggested by whom? I mean, are citizens coming to you clamoring that we changed it, or we've been telling you that?
We, we have had, we have had response from, from officials to discuss it.
Okay, I just want to, where, where the genesis was from?
It was just to, to run through that.
Citywise?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, citywide, I should say.
Citywide, and there's also an area there for, where we had treated the, the city parcels and parks more detailed, but we, if we're going to do this, we need to gather our information citywide, so...
All right. Downtown parking.
Downtown parking district, it needs to have further analysis, and regulations need to be revised and clarified for that. We have something called the C2 parking district and the downtown parking district. Now, in there, previously, when we were first, come with the rezoning of your downtown area. Before it was ever downtown mixed use, it was considered to be C2, which was a commercial element that would allow for the zero front setback. If you'll noticed, and we've, I've mentioned this before, everything downtown is completely out of compliance, except for Casbar Coffee, who has put himself in compliance, Hideaway Pizza, who was actually built in compliance, and the three over at the Spy Chest, and Nathan Bull's office and his building behind him. Those are your only C2 properties within downtown, so therefore they're the only people downtown that are meeting the proper zoning compliance. The parking district was to mimic the C2 zoning district. Since the C2 zoning district did not materialize... Since the C2 zoning district did not materialize in the way that it should have, and along come the Comp Plan Amendment that took over and formed the downtown mixed use, who by the way, needs to be rezoned to the mixed use zoning there. The requirements within that downtown parking district is muddled between two different fashions of requirements along the same portion of property. And we just would like to bring that to you so that it can be clarified, that the rules and regulations for downtown parking can be simplified, and that when you're explaining it, you don't get the question looks of what's this, why is this, and why did it happen? We have several parsons that have come in to be redeveloped within our downtown, and they have had to suffer through the ordeal of having their parking questioned because in one avenue, you're downtown, you're allowed to have certain avenues of it, and in the other hand, you're forced to add parking on a piece of property that can't possibly hold a vehicle. So we just need to bring it into compliance with how your downtown area is developed, and also weigh in options of whether or not there could possibly be an additional parking lot or something of that matter. So.
We'll give you priority.
We have our itinerant vendors, mobile vendors and specialty vendors. We have pulled together some draft ordinances of all these. We've analyzed, had analysis on the data that we have collected. We show alternative solutions to the vending sales within the city. We just need, it's a very complex issue. It has numerous regulatory agencies that get involved with not only the vendors, but with the property rights to also be considered. So.
I do get a lot of calls about those itinerant vendors out there, especially from our block of mortar type businesses that pay a lot of taxes and everything. These people come in and, as you told me the other day, like this recent car, I think the only thing they had to pay was, was it a permit for a tent?
A permit's all they've got. That's all we can restrict them to.
I'm glad you're looking at this. This is a problem.
We have been actually studying this, and as a matter of fact, we had, we thought we had sort of a fairly good solution, and our agencies in Tallahassee decides that we're going to reword this, and that's the reason it's most important to check your most current, whenever you're, we're setting down a, something for y'all to vote on and go by, that we have done our due diligence through federal, state, and local.
I would just say, we've had plenty of time to do that. This has been sitting around for a long time.
Yes, sir.
Long time. Go ahead.
This came up right after I came onto the council.
Mm-hmm.
And I've been waiting for something to happen, and I guess we've waited too long because now I'm getting complaints from the dealerships, car dealerships.
Gentlemen, I get complaints every day, every day. But right now, with some of our, the newer additions at your federal and state level, you're just going to have to tread very carefully on this. So it is involved. What we had has to be reworked because it is no longer appropriate. It would have probably solved the problem, but it's not, it's not what we can present now. So just notify them as the priority so that we can get it, get it scheduled in there.
This might wind up being our crab island.
All right, I'll move on.
Okay. Right-of-way parking and enforcement procedures. The municipal, our municipality through its duly authorized officers have a non-exclusive jurisdiction over the prosecution trial, adjudication, and punishment of the violations for our chapter and verse that we quote in the Florida statutes. It says, "And when a violation occurs within the municipality, and the person is so charged by the municipal police officer." So this, this sort of goes through our Chapter 86, Traffic and Vehicles, and sort of pulls out the rules and regulations for parking on the right-of-way roadway, whether or not there's a fine. It says, "You can't, you can't have parking on the roadway or in a fire lane." There's several things that we need to spring for, and in our revision of the code, of course, we're going to tap into Chapter 86. So this will be one element that will be as part of that code that we probably want a little more specific time for that.
There's one thing that I've noticed in town that these people that are doing yard work take up one half of the rule. They park their vehicle there with a big trailer behind it.
Exactly.
And I've often wondered if there's anything to prevent that.
I don't know. It doesn't seem as though we don't, we have much enforcement. Is that because we don't have the ordinances? Or have any teeth behind it? Or we don't have the?
Nope. We have, we have the caveats in there. I'm not sure, I'm not sure with what, and this will require us to sit down and meet with the police department in order to get it clarified so that if we have something incorrect in our code, we need to change it. They will be able to, we'll work together and come up with what we need in order to get this done.
We have.
Go ahead.
We have an ordinance in place that covers that. I gave them a copy of it to the previous chief and asked him to start enforcing it, and I didn't see any improvement.
Well, it, the Section 8626 actually covers the no parking on the right-of-way, except in marked areas. It also covers no parking in the fire lanes and on the shoulders. It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't specifically call out the shoulders of the right-of-way. It's what it is, is in the fire lane or on the roadway itself, which the, the vendors there are on the roadway. They're not on the shoulder. They're in the roadway, which would apply under this 8626. But, you know.
Question to Mr. Grant. I followed up, like you said, to our former chief, but to your understanding, Mr. Grant, what authority and what can be done for that person that parks on the street, on the street, not the right-of-way, with a forty-foot trailer? To your knowledge, what can you enforce?
I think the problem we have, and I'll, I need to look into it a little bit more rather than be blindsided, is if we write the citation, how was that citation heard? Is it heard through the court system or is it heard through the city level that'd be in the ordinance? I think that's where the, there's a little black area right there. We need to figure out where we need to be on that.
There, I had a question today. That same thing, and Mr. Blocker, I thought we had codes that was applicable to this, parking on the street. I said, I'll have you an answer tomorrow.
And I think that's going to be similar to the city ordinance. If we arrest someone under a city ordinance, it's not going to be prosecuted at the state level, the state attorney's office, without us paying for that prosecution. And I'm thinking the traffic is going to be the same way, but rather than me tie myself down to that, let me find out and get back to you. Would you please? Try to feel more comfortable doing it.
Your mind must not be on.
Can you hear me now? No? No?
There is a, you, we're, police departments using uniform and party uniform traffic citations, are they not?
That's correct.
Okay. There is a state statute against prohibiting anybody from impeding traffic. And if you're parked covering up or blocking one entire lane, you're impeding traffic. And if you write that citation as impeding traffic, it's going to go through the courts just like it does with any other state infraction or violation.
Can I interject in here, 8637-4?
Can he respond to my comment, please?
I was going to tell him what our code said on it.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. It says that that, it may be that the code itself doesn't apply in with the citations exactly correctly. It says, "Providing for twelve hours for a vehicle to be moved before it can be towed." And this is directly out of 8637, item number four in our code. It provides for twelve hours for the vehicle to be moved before it can be towed. At one time, the CPD placed a seventy-two-hour sticker on the vehicles stating it would not be removed in seventy-two, if it were not removed in seventy-two hours, they would be towed.
But that's on the right-of-way. I'm talking about being in the street. You cannot leave an unattended vehicle with no flashers going or a red cone behind it in the street for twelve hours. That's all night long.
Right. And that's handled up there in Florida statutes 316-006 and also 008.
Florida statute says that, twelve hours?
No. Florida statute handles the municipal's jurisdiction over it. What I'm saying is, our own restriction in our code is prohibiting, that's the reason we really need to, we really need, we really need some down-to-earth study between, in order to get all these kinks out of here and gets the, get the inappropriate language out.
Well, that's why it needs to be revised. If you, if we leave a vehicle abandoned, basically, if there's nobody with it, in the dark with no flashers covering up one entire lane, and somebody comes along and hits it, then we're going to get one of those papers from a lawyer that says, "You knew or should have known that this danger existed."
Yeah. The statute 316-245 states that is unlawful to impede in any way the roadway, and that means no parking the roadway, travel da-da-da. But our own city ordinance is where, what's hampering us. We need to, we need to get that, and so that the state statutes can flow more clearly.
So that, that topic really, I'm sorry, you and that counsel.
Mine's going to be short, Mr. President, especially on this right-of-way parking. We have communities that are being affected by that now, parking on the right-of-way, and it's not a low priority for me, for my citizens, in certain areas where we have people just parking anywhere on their personal property, on city property, and blocking, and impeding traffic, causing possible accidents with harm. So I'm really going to push this issue.
The only thing I was going to say is, maybe we need to delete that section rights away and address parking and enforcement. I mean, you're not talking about just the right-of-way, you're talking about on the streets also.
Great, man. Yeah, I agree with that. We don't, it's ridiculous to me to give them seventy-two hours to move a car when the FHP can come by and red tag a car and give him twenty-four hours to move it.
Give you a high priority, we can reduce that. Counsel, we talked to you, thinking about.
Well, just basically saying, what's existing on the books really hasn't been enforced.
Maybe because it impedes rather than helps the situation. This is a very complex issue, and it needs discussion among several of the departments in order to come out with a workable solution. So it's, you know, it's going to take some prep before we get something here, because not only are they going to have to, have to study it, and then it has to be prepared and presented back, but it is a most important subject.
Speedway based on priority here.
Mm-hmm. That's right.
Go ahead.
Just want to come in, and I understand the priority, and I'm sure we're going to take a good look at that. But whenever we get this list, and especially if they're high priority, can we be assured they're going to be accomplished within a year's time? I don't think we should have to go past a year's time on a, on a high priority item with getting the work done on it. It's just, you know, like Mr. Fairclaw said, we were talking about something, when he was, when he was first elected in office, you know, and someone was trying for him to run again, and we got some of these same problems that, that we don't, me personally, I don't want to leave for the next council to resolve them. I think, I really think how you gentlemen up here, and I think we should get as much as accomplished as we can before the next council or majority of the council is, whatever happens, you know, renewed or re-elected or non-elected or whatever, but we, I think we have an obligation to our citizens to move exponentially as we can to get these things resolved for our citizens, and I'm through, Mr. President.
We certainly can. I agree with that. And our function can be to meet more often, have more workshops, have special meetings. However, you can only do that as quickly as you can get it through the system. And if you don't have the staffing, enough staffing here through the system, it doesn't matter how often we meet.
That's another issue.
You know, so that's really more than, more than me to, I hear what you're saying.
Okay. System updating of the computer records, property data within our systems are not updated at a regular cycle. It requires some form of force, of form of sit-down communication between all the parties that are involved and come up and formulate an avenue of updating the data without harming their archival records. Must be something doable because Okaloosa County's property data is updated and presented once a week. This is, it seems that only broad-spectrum update for the city has been done as we, and here we are preparing for another program itself. This complex issue runs through several departments. It needs to be, we need discussion time to be authorized among parties as well as council time also. When we first come into blueprints back in the back, we loaded it with our new property numbers. Those of you all know that I come from the GIS background, and that is the geographic information systems which manipulate, translate, and adjust your physical data on every piece of property in the city. And when I'm in the census part, I am manipulating personal information for the same type function. When you're in the, any other realm where you use a GIS program, think of it as a known or an identifiable, and any attribute that you can place to it. You can use this for billing. You can have a meter number for a water, your water service. That water service can be tied to your GIS data as to consumptions, flows, repairability, who owns it, what conditions it in, when it's been checked, any type of avenue there. You can also tie your billing to that, which we've got it tied to a Superiorian project. So, and it works very well. We did that, Destin Water Users was one of the first to go with computerized so that you have billing there. So when I, the computer records are dependent in our land files, should be dependent on our PIN numbers for our property. PIN number is a unique identifier by which you can trace property. Once it is actually issued, which we had the discussion with the courthouse today, they had issued a non, it's not non-conforming, but it was not unique in a way it should be. Your PIN number is your section, your township, your range, your subdivision number, your block or land parcel number, and the lot or parcel out of that. So if you were giving a lot and a block number, you would normally have the correct lot on it. As today, there had been one assigned that had an incorrect lot. Unfortunately, it had already been assigned, so you know what? From now on, Lot 18 will have Lot 17 in its PIN number, because when you transfer out and divvy out that piece of property, all the land records go with it. So your PIN number shown as a parcel ID on your property tax, your taxing forms, is unique. That is what we have used in the, in the back as far as our identifying property and tracing it. In our computer records, we have not updated our addresses. We are, in many things, we are still predirectional. Unfortunately, when I turn these addresses over into the local government unit in Tallahassee for your communication sales tax, uh, taxing. for your communication sales tax, uh, taxing, South Ferdinand Boulevard and Ferdinand Boulevard South are two completely different places. So unless we can unify our addresses and get them accurate through not only our systems, the other systems that are used within our city, and the systems that are used in Tallahassee, used at the emergency services, all these, we need to be reflecting the same place. So it's going to take some sit-down discussions, sit-down work, and some planning on this. It just needs to have some time authorized by the council to get this done. As a matter of fact, the 31st is the deadline at turning in the rest of the addresses for your communication taxes for next year.
Mr. President, just a quick observation, if you don't mind. And I don't know how it happened, I'm sure this had something to do with it, for lack of way back in the, I would say, 60s for sure, I think that was when my parents built the house. The address on that carries 553. The house directly across from me carries a 596. And I'll leave it at that.
I can answer that for you, because addressing is a form of measurement. And unfortunately, none of my predecessors knew that fact. There, there are roads where we have odd and evens on the same side of the road. We have half addresses. So...
Let's leave it at that.
That's, that's enough said.
Let's not dig up skeletons in the closet here. Let's move on to out-of-city utility services.
Then that's, we've discussed those about whether or not we want to utilize the small-scale annexations of the, you know, accumulating up to, you know, the 10 acres in order to come in, or if we want to study some other way of actually getting the whole area looked at at one time. So, as, as, I didn't elaborate very much because I figured that's probably number, last number of the low category. So...
Mr. President.
Yes, go ahead, Councilman Hayes.
Um, this, this is one issue that we have, certain cities are looking at through the committees down with the League of Cities. I haven't sat on that committee. But there's some, some cities that are really trying to look at this annexation thing really serious, 'cause they have a jigsaw like we have.
Yeah. Your hands get tied for that.
Yeah. So, but they're, they're looking at that. I'll keep you informed if it progresses.
Mr. President, there's...
Yes, Mr. Hawley.
There's a case that came down out of the appellate court about whether or not you could serve out of, out of city, if it's just a minor, you can do it, if you could face that, you can't perform an annex. And that's already been heard by the appellate court.
And that's the reason our out-of-city regulations, signed with an agreement, that they would annex as soon as they become contiguous.
Yeah, I understand that.
So I don't know how that's going to affect, so that's, that's another part of our study. As each time we study this, we go and grab the newest of the new in order to come up with our recommendations for you. So...
Thank you, Teresa. That was a lot, but that's why we had scheduled a long workshop to look at all the projects, ongoing projects. And we'll get these seats back to you. And before I open up to the public, I'd like to see if anybody has any input, starting with the mayor. Do you have anything for us this evening?
No, sir.
Okay. Councilman Fairclaw?
Yes, I had the itinerant vendors and this, or handicap parking on my list of things to discuss. The only thing I might add, I just asked Mr. Steele that if it is all possible to put a, another handicap spot somewhere near Desi's.
We can't, we can't put handicapping on Main Street.
Okay, but what about that side street?
We can look and see if we can.
Every time I go eat there, somebody asks me, can I get that car moved away from the fire hydrant? Because they're using that fire hydrant as a handicap space.
Yes, sir. I'm aware of that.
Okay. Councilman Hayes?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Blocker?
The chief's gonna find out about this on street parking, ask men in the vehicle.
All right. Councilman Cox?
Oh, yes. One thing concerning annexation, and I'm just gonna talk in a little generalities. There are certain parcels nearby, adjacent to the city, that, that if they were able to be required, it would wind up being extremely beneficial to the city. And I don't know if we've ever considered a special incentive without setting, setting precedence. So I just wanna throw that out there for possible discussion in the near future.
Thank you. Mr. Hawley?
No, I, I, what is, if you're referring to trying to get them to annex, if you get too far away, if it just happens to be on the edge of the case, I'll find it if I can. I had it was in the Florida Bar Journal where I saw it, they had ruled that if you get outside of your jurisdiction very far trying to service water, that you can't make an annex. But if they're within a short district, they're, because if you're out there trying to set it up as a water business to them, that's what they're saying, you can't make an annex. If that's what your idea is, I may not.
Madam Clerk, do you have anything for us? Mr. Steele?
Yes.
You have anything for us?
No, sir.
Okay. Deputy Chief, nothing for us. Maria, anything for us? Chief?
No, sir.
Teresa, anything else for us? Okay, at this point, I'll open it up to the audience. Anybody in the audience like to address the CRA? I mean, that was our last meeting. City Council, three minutes. Approach the microphone, give your name, address, and we'll give you three minutes.
I have three minutes. My name is Landerme Edwards, 587 Brock Avenue, and you all know me. One thing I was bringing up, what he brought up about the parking, this was brought up 20 years ago. You go to the south side of town, some parts of the north, to the west, Mr. Hayes, I'll tell you this, a lot of the old houses are built right up next to the road. Where do you park? On the right-of-way. And far as the, the trucks that are cleaning, you know, sometimes you have to bear a little pain from the, do it. If they do it within, say, three to four hours, and they move on, what's the difference? The city does the same thing, the county does the same thing, the state does the same thing. When they come down right-of-ways and clean, they park there. A lot of times, it's hard to get around them because they got trucks and tractors and everything. But I see a lot of problems, and one thing I wanted to bring up wasn't so much the parking, it's the drugs. On my street right now, I can take you over there and show you seven people selling drugs. I've complained about it, I've done, I've talked to the mayor about it, he agreed with the same thing. We've got a problem. And the problem is, the parking, they drive right up, park in the street, buy their drugs, and it's like a caravan. And this is not happening just one place. Three days ago, I got proposition at Junior Food Store. I complained about it. The guy was sitting right next to me selling drugs. You know, we got a problem here in town. It's parking all over the place. You go down by the Thrifty down there, they're parking out in the streets, and they're selling drugs right across the street from there. And people are coming to me and talking to me about this, and basically, y'all know, I hadn't been up here in probably years' time. But there's got to be something done. We worried about parking, we're working about downtown. Downtown's been the same thing since the 70s, when I came up here. There's a parking, the right-of-ways, the route around Crestview. It has been the same thing, and I wrote an article the other day and sent a paper, nobody cared about it, was if they took all those bicycle paths and took all that asphalt up, they could've gave us around about a Crestview. And the amount of money spent for a guy riding a bicycle, I ask him, I got a Harley, I don't need insurance on it, I can ride him down the road. I hit you, huh? State of Florida don't require it. But you go down there and hit a person on a bicycle, don't have no insurance, no tags.
Time's up, Mr. White. Okay. Go ahead. Thank you for your input. Anybody else in the audience like to address the council? Nobody else? Thank you all for coming. This meeting is adjourned.